Okay. Good. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our West Orange Town Council meeting, April 10th. First up on our -- oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, please open our meeting.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviat?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you. So, I was anxious to get started, especially when we have a room full of people like this, because what I liked was the headline that said, "The gym at West Orange High School erupted as the final buzzard sounded, marking first-ever girls' basketball north to Group Four State Sectional Title versus Hackensack, 56 to 50." So, this evening, we would like to recognize West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team for your tremendous success. Michelle? I'm going to ask my colleague, Michelle Castellino, having been at the Board for so long.
How exciting. Congratulations. This is a long time coming. I'm a former alumni of the high school myself, and this is a great feat that you have achieved this year. It's even greater when you could appreciate -- I know your parents are in the back of not only do you perform well on the court, but also academically. You have ASAP that you have to deal with, and you have, you know, with all the finals and everything during the year. You have to train year-long for this accomplishment. You've been working many years with the mountaintop and other traveling teams that you've performed on, so this is great hard work and a long time coming. And from the bottom of my heart, ladies, kudos, congratulations to my colleagues. And we're going to read a little citation here. Before I get started, it would be remiss of me if I didn't -- first, I want to ask your coaches to come up. Coach Williams? Head coach, Denise Williams, Megan Calaballo, Jackie Cruz, Coach Doug Nevins, and Michael DeBarbury. Coaches, nice -- great to see you all of you. Nice job. Well done. Coach, I have to say, when you came into the program years ago, I remember you were hired by Superintendent O'Neil, and I remember him telling me what a firecracker you were. We'd be so excited to have someone with such great energy enter into our program. And for those of you that don't know, at West Orange High School, we demand -- they've asked a lot of our coaches and the staff. And for you coaches, to always make sure that you're there for your athletes, making sure they perform academically, as well as being there to assist them on the court as well, is a tremendous effort on all your parts. And I know, also, working with the Recreation Program, Mr. Keough, congratulate you as well, and Mr. Johnson, they worked hand-in-hand with programs for our youth leagues, and we appreciate that. So, congratulations as well, and we're excited to read this on behalf of myself and our colleagues. Citation of the West Orange Township Council, recognizing the West Orange High School Girls' Basketball Team. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange High School Girls' Basketball Team. And all the wonderful ladies, I'll be called up shortly by Coach Williams. The West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team finished the season with an astonishing 22-8 record. They were 12-1 at home, with the first loss coming very early in the season, when the identify of the team -- with identity of the team was being tested. Beginning the season with a 9-7 record, they went out on a 13-game winning streak before falling to Franklin in their final game. They advanced to the county semifinals for the second year in a row and captured the first-ever state sectional for North One Group Four Championship at home against Hackensack. Very nice job, ladies. In addition to the championship, Maya Bembry was named Essex County Player of the Year and received Second Team All-State and First Team All-Group awards. Maya and Nahila Simpson received First Team All-Conference, and Cassie Farrell and Bianca Fede both received Honorable Mention All-Conference. Nice job, ladies. And along with these accomplishments, the team's head coach, Denise Williams, was named Essex County Coach of the Year. Congratulations. The West Orange Township Council wishes to congratulate the West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team on their excellent sportsmanship, and wishes them continued success in their future. Job well done by all. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say, it's a pleasure to be standing here in front of you all. I just wanted to thank you, the town, and the parents and the players for being a part of the vision that I had when I came here five years ago. So, it's, like I said, it's amazing to be standing up here, and the goals that you've accomplished are, you know, things that people dream of. So, continue to strive for the best, ladies, and, you know, I want to just thank all the seniors who were going off to college, and I wish you the best in the next couple of years, and all the girls coming back. You know, it takes a lot of hard work to continue to work on what we build. So, again, thank you, everyone, for having us here, and congratulations again, West Orange Girls Basketball. First, I'd like to call up Aleah Perkins. Sarah Thomas. Ebony Odom Barnes.
If you're not seniors, I expect to see you again next year.
Maya Bembry. Kaia Jones. Bianca Fedi. Faith Lewis. Daviana Phillips.
So, to all our families, if they're not seniors, we want to see you again next year.
Mackenzie Dover. And then I have my managers, Ja Marie Dominguez, Tamar Sworzer, Ivana Doucet, Douse, and Jada
Keep up the good work. Jack, you're up on redevelopment.
Uh-huh.
You're up. Dad or up?
Obviously, you went by. You see what's going on down there?
Stanfield.
It looks great. I tried to get a hold of my friend today, but he's a bit busy. He pulled me back, but I wanted to see how we were able to stay happy. But as of right now, I don't know the answer to that question, because he pulled me back. Went by there today. Everything looks great. They're moving right along on the battery building also, and it looks good.
And I know last time we had a -- at our last meeting, we talked about the agreements and financial agreements. Any update on the status of our financial agreements?
For Phase Two? Actually, we're trying to put a meeting together. What happened was Jean Diaz was out of the country.
Yes, he was.
He's now back, and now Jen Credidio, who is our redevelopment attorney, is out of the country. So, she'll be back the end of this week. So, when she gets back this week, we're going to sit down and hopefully go over what we need to go over to get those agreements signed.
Any comments? Any questions, Joe?
We just, at the last council meeting, we had a brief discussion about the pilot and how it's going to be calculated for Phase One. And we actually, I guess, had a meeting, was it yesterday?
Yes.
And got some things clarified. I put together a spreadsheet of what I think is my understanding, because clearly, there are things that I don't understand. But Mr. Gross was saying that he hasn't had a chance to take a look at it, so maybe we can get it all ironed out and then discuss it at the next council meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah, no problem with that. Absolutely.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah. Ms. Sayers, any update on the Central Avenue redevelopment zone, and specifically, the West Orange portion?
Actually, I just saw -- actually, there's something on agenda tonight for that, isn't there? I believe that they have to do some more environmental remediation. So, until the remediation's done, obviously, we're not going to move ahead with anything else. We just want to make sure that all the remediation is done, and it's done properly. So, once that's completed, excuse me, then we'll move ahead. I know, on the orange side, that they're pretty -- they're well ahead of themselves, and they're just waiting for the remediation to get done.
Are we still in time? Within the timeframe?
Timeframe of what?
What the developer had projected.
I'm not so sure exactly what that timeframe was, to be honest with you, but I think we're moving along pretty well there.
Yeah, they've done significant.
It's amazing.
I guess you can report later about some of the initiatives that this town is -- in the city of Orange is advocating.
Got it.
Sure. Yes, Councilwoman?
Two questions. Wanted to follow up on the Central Avenue project. Would you happen to know, or you may not right now, if the orange building has all been leased yet?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay. If you'd just --
I can check that out.
Just curious. And my second question is shifting gears to the Essex Green Shopping Plaza. I know the mayor and the administration, you're having a meeting at the high school on Wednesday, April 25th.
Correct.
Is it 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
And what is the format, so the folks at home?
There is no format. Actually, interesting that you bring this up, because we had gotten some questions about, you know, where's the plan? There is no plan. We're just having the open public meeting to get -- listen to people, hear what they have to say, see what questions they have, and then after that meeting is when we're going to sit down and hopefully get together with the redevelopers and try to put the plan together. But right now, there is no plan in place.
Are the property owners going to be present at that meeting?
I believe they are.
Okay.
I believe they are.
Great. And so, anybody could come and ask you any question and
Absolutely.
Give any idea they want.
Right.
So, that's a great opportunity.
We're looking for ideas and questions.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to add to, Michelle, that having spoken to the mayor, that that was the date that the owners of the property were available, so that's why it's scheduled on that particular date.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Sayers, any numbers right now down for Main Street, for Edison Lofts? Any numbers of leases or, you know, any commercial?
No. Like I said, I tried to reach out to the guy that I speak to, the contracting -- the guy who runs the contracting for Prism. Unfortunately, I didn't get the call to late this afternoon, and I didn't get a call back from him. So, I really don't know where they're at with any of the -- any more of the leasing other than what I had had at the last meeting. And that's my fault, because I called them late this afternoon.
Okay. If we can get that for now, just get an idea of, you know, what we see, the kind of traffic. You know, even if the number of visitors, like how many people have come to see the units and the development? Be interested to know.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Just a quick question. I was going through the governing documents for Phase One, and it appeared in a couple of different places that construction was supposed to be finished by September 30th, 2017. Is that correct?
Uh...
No, no, no. I'm back on Prism, Phase One.
You're talking about Phase One. It could be. It could be. I don't know. It was. I don't have the documents in front of me, so I don't want to say what the date is or what it isn't, but that's a possibility that -- it's possible. I'm not saying it is, but I don't have the document in front of me, so I don't have that.
As I recall, the documents reflected the banks outside the government financing, which was 36 months, I'm sorry, which was 36 months from the start.
Okay.
We're not there yet, so we can check one, but that doesn't -- that doesn't ring my mind.
I'm just looking at redevelopment agreement, Section 4 dot 1A I, which is page 13, PDF page 14. It says, and I'm just quoting, "Construction of Phase One project will take place by September 30th, 2017." There's also a reference to it in the resolution.
That's initiation, I think.
And is that the revised document or the original document?
These are the ones that are up on the website as being -- the town website as being the governing documents.
Okay. But that statement you just read doesn't say it would be completed by then.
Yes. Will take place by September 30th.
Will take place. That doesn't mean completed.
I think that might be initiated, but again...
Okay. And then the assignment of the financial agreement also says that anticipate a substantial completion date of on or about September 30th, 2017.
I'm not -- if that's what it says, then you're probably correct. But I don't know what's -- why are you asking that question?
Well, because now it's six months later.
Yeah. Okay. They had some problems, obviously, as you know, when we talked about it, with PSE and G coming out and doing what they're supposed to do, so they did. There were some issues. That's just a date.
Yeah, I'd rather go back and take a look at the
Yeah, let's take a look and I'll send...
I know there was...
There were some delays, though, in the project.
That may -- that is accurate, but I'm certain that the time period was longer than that, but let's go back and see. There may be other provisions, which gives you, you know, the outside date, where that may be anticipated date. Because one of the things we did do in the document was create anticipated dates, and I think that's what you're reading. We were trying to push them to give us, you know, dates when it should be done, so that we had targets. But that is not necessarily the outside date when they had to have it completed. I think there are other places in the document, and there may be other dates. Let's go back and look at that. In the total.
Okay. We'll talk about it. And then there's a version in the redevelopment agreement, 4 dot 3, is on page 15, and it just says, "Any material change in the scope of Phase One shall require the township's prior written approval." So, if there's a written approval to extend the date, if that actually would happen.
There is. I can tell you, there is no written approval. As of today. That's for sure.
Well, we'll just talk about it next meeting.
Sure.
Please.
Any other questions?
Any other redevelopment questions?
No.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Council liaison? Start.
You want to start, Councilwoman?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Council President. Just an update, our street fair, our great annual street fair, is slated for June 3rd, Saturday. It will be starting at 10:00 AM across the whole length of the downtown corridor. Also, just a note, as a side note, that we're also having our first annual bike safety rodeo, sponsored by the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, which will take place at Washington School. There'll be some great giveaways, some safety programs, bike helmets, and I need a big shout-out to Lori Caffner and Officers JSAC and Smarsh, the West Orange Traffic Bureau, for really pulling this together. So, we'll have more information for you, but it will be on the same day as the West Orange Street Fair. Also new this year, the West Orange Street Fair will be the additional motorcycles to our car show. So, we have some great motorcycles coming in along with our car show. A big thank you and shout-out to Anthony, the proprietor of the poorhouse on Main Street. Thank you, Anthony, for always supporting our efforts on Main Street. There'll be trophies awarded to the best cars in show and motorcycles in show. Just a note to West Orange residents and members, Downtown West Orange Alliance members and West Orange Chamber of Commerce members only pay $50 for their space, but space is limited, so please contact Megan Brill at the West Orange Downtown Alliance to get your together. Also, another new event for this year and this summer in the Main Street corridor will be the first-ever West Orange Idol Star Program, which will take place on July 21st. It'll be an all-day event featuring talent and new talent throughout the West Orange community. Winners will be judged, and one lucky winner will be the 2,000 West Orange Idol winner. So, please keep posted. We're going to have some good talent. And the location will be notified, but it'll be an all-day event from early Saturday morning till 5:30 at night. Of course, there'll be vendors selling their wares. There'll also be food and drinks available during this event, so it's another, you know, addition to the Downtown Alliance. Also, I'd like to make note that -- I have to read my notes, I'm sorry -- that the new Willow and Olivia sign for the new bake shop at the old wagon wheel, the new signage went up on Saturday, and everybody's thrilled, especially the new owner, Gia. She's really excited about opening, so as soon as we -- you keep an eye on Facebook, at her Facebook page for Willow and Olivia's Bakery, you'll see the store and what it looks like. They did a fantastic job, and they're looking forward to service the merchants and residents and all the residents of West Orange when they open. The date will be announced very shortly. Also, I know it's too late for people to see, but also tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Essex County Educational Center at Turtle Brook Zoo will be our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting. We hope to see many residents there to voice their concerns and hear about what we're planning, in addition to the bike rodeo and student and pedestrian education, so hope we'll see you there. And that's all I can say. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman?
Sure. I have a lot of announcements. We're very busy here in the spring in West Orange.
Yes, we are.
Bear with us. All exciting, great stuff. Next Tuesday night, all-day fundraiser for the Friends of the West Orange Public Library at the Oak Barrel Pub on Main Street. 15% of all proceeds of the day will go to the West Orange Friends of the Public Library to help support many activities that the Friends group is working in conjunction with the library board. So, it's always a fun event, and I hope we could see you there. Our fire department and our police departments has been very busy, always engaging with our community, always working very hard for the township. The -- let's see, this one is sponsored by the fire department. They have two events. One is Friday, May 18th, from 2:30, 7:30. The American Red Cross Blood Drive they'll be sponsoring, and that will be at the Renna House, right behind here on Tangaston Street, on May 18th, so we'll announce that again in the future. Also, their CPR certification course that they're sponsoring Saturday, May 5th. It's a limited of 20 people, so if you're interested, please sign up quickly. That's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's also posted on the website. Our police department is having a fundraiser this Saturday, April 14th. Support them for their community service event, for the Police Unity Tour. For all our police officers that write down yearly down to Washington, DC, it's a big event hosted late in the spring. That's Saturday night, the 14th, at the West Orange Elk Lodge, from 7:00 to 11:00. $20 per ticket. You could find out information from teamwestorange@gmail.com or calling 973-255-7649. All this is posted on the westorange.org website. And switching gears, oh, this one is April 22nd. The police department is hoping a self-defense course at West Orange High School. Sunday, call the rec department at 973-3254150, and that's from 1 to 4 at West Orange High School in the Tarnoff Gymnasium. And last but not least, I want to take a few minutes. The last meeting, we presented our senior citizen survey, which is up here. If anybody in the audience would like to see a copy, I have it here. They have it placed online. It took them a couple, about a week, to get it up and online running, but we have a new design, not so much a new design, but a lot of time was taken over the past couple weeks. If you go to our website, and I have it printed out for my colleagues, which I'll pass down to you, and I got to thank Sherri Quirk, she spent a lot of time this past week. What we gathered from the survey, first of all, I want to thank again everyone who took the survey. We really made an effort to try to get it out there to the entire community. We had references on the survey where you could input your own ideas, and you could fill in some constructive, you know, criticism or give us an idea, and we got a lot of great feedback, and those quotes are mentioned in the survey online. There's a summary of the survey, that's 22 pages. If you want to be ambitious, there's a 75-page document. That is a little tough to read, but it's there for you, for your reading pleasure. And of course, the link to last week's meeting with Montclair State, I can never do her justice, she was wonderful. Ms. Bunker came from Montclair State, and she gave a very thoughtful presentation. So, we appreciate all the comments that were made, all the thoughts that were given. And from that, what I found very interesting is 90% of the folks that responded on the survey do go on the computer. So, meeting with the health department and all the ladies and the senior -- that work on senior programming, the focus has been the past couple weeks to make sure we revamp the website and kind of reorganize it. So, if you go onto the front page of the website, there's three spots that you can find senior services. One is the big icon that scrolls along with other information. You could click there. You could click to the left, right on top now, it says Senior Citizen Resources, and over to the right, under the news, it posts the survey. And no matter where you click, you get a copy of the survey. We try to make it user-friendly. When you do click on the one senior page, there's information, which I want to encourage all residents to please sign up for the email e-blast that the Senior Citizen Department issues out for all notices. And you could do that by emailing eBianchi, E-B-I-N-C-H-I, at westorange.org, or just call them, 973-3254150. Oh, seeing my glasses here. Approaching 55 and older now. Getting harder and harder to see. But we try to make it very user-friendly. Ms. Quirk spent a lot of time the past couple weeks trying to get this, bringing in Ms. DeNova, our director, and go through it. A lot of information is there. We've put the counting information on there, transportation information. On the one icon, the senior citizen shuttle information is on there, and you could click on. If you click on the recreation site, I found us to be very busy here in West Orange. We have Steel Magnolias. There's a trip to Hundred and Hills to see the place Steel Magnolias on April 26th. There's our senior luncheon at Mayfair Farms on May 30th. There's Zumba every week up at You could click to the left, right on top now, it says Senior Citizen Resources, and over to the right, under the news, it posts the survey. And no matter where you click, you get a copy of the survey. We try to make it user-friendly. When you do click on the One Senior page, there's information, which I want to encourage all residents to please sign up for the email e-blast that the Senior Citizen Department issues out for all notices. And you could do that by emailing ebianchi@westorange.org, or just call them, 973-325-4150. Oh, seeing my glasses here. Approaching 55 and older now, getting harder and harder to see. But we try to make it very user-friendly. Ms. Quirk spent a lot of time the past couple weeks trying to get this, bringing in Ms. De Nova, our director, and go through it. A lot of information is there. We've put the counting information on there, transportation information. On the one icon, the senior citizen shuttle information is on there, and you could click on. If you click on the recreation site, I found us to be very busy here in West Orange. We have Steel Magnolias. There's a trip to Hundred and Hills to see the play Steel Magnolias on April 26th. There's our senior luncheon at Mayfair Farms on May 30th. There's Zumba every week up at the CATS Center. There's Bingo, I believe, every Monday. There's yoga classes, and there's also aerobics, some of the many programs, and all the flyers are listed on there. If you need a flyer, I have it here for this evening. A lot of great programs, and just trying to reorganize the information to get it out to you. Also, working with our school district, I was happy to hear that we have upcoming events for them. We have the Senior Citizen Prom, which actually is tomorrow night, so if you haven't heard about it, I'm sorry, the Senior Citizen Prom is April 18th on a Wednesday, and the health department will have transportation. Also, tomorrow night is the High School Musical in the Heights by our very talented West Orange High School students. There's transportation as well. Again, please call 325-4150 if you'd like transportation to these events. Also, the school district, working with our senior office, will be having another free, I'm sorry, these performances are all free, by the way. Liberty Middle School will be having a presentation on May 2nd for their spring musical, which we'll be announcing. And I got to thank the Helping Hands Program, Ms. Cardinal. She had brought the middle school, the Liberty Middle School students to the St. Patrick's Day Parade this year, and the Halloween Day Party at the CATS Civic Center, and it was nice the kids performed, if some of you were there, and they also worked and interacted with our residents. Again, this is something that will continue to be doing. We're gonna try again to have the Team Tech Program, working with Mr. Zakala, who's been very busy with the Mountaineer Mentors, and most importantly, we have our, Mrs. Duffy had a meeting last week with Mrs. Duffy, Ms. Iovino, and Ms. De Nova, and the grant writer, trying to write a grant for partners with health to possibly get us a part-time coordinator. We're trying to see if we could get some more computers for our senior buildings. So, a lot of great things they're working on. I'll give you more information once these, as you know, grants take a while to write. And one that is very time-sensitive is with ARC, and we have Mr. Keough and the Recreation Department working with the Health Department and trying to configure a grant to improve something recreation-minded. So, a lot of hard work is being done. We appreciate all the effort that is being put forth out there, and when I talked to Mrs. Duffy the other day to get an update on some of these programs, she wanted me to let the council know. They did a mailing. So, everything I have here was mailed out to anyone that signs up on the directory, so please, I encourage you, if you haven't heard about these programs, please call the Health Department, email them, get on their e-blast so you get the information. The PR, our West Orange Public Relations Commission, we're having a meeting Thursday night. We're putting together a townwide resource book focusing on our services here in the township, and so, you know, we're gonna keep going, trying to get this right, but we do offer programs, and what came back was a lot of folks didn't know about the program. So, and all that effort is being made to get that information out there to the public. But what I did find funny and ironic that Mrs. Duffy did get a couple phone calls this week from some Verona and Qualwell residents wanting to know if they could attend our programs. And so, I guess the word has gotten out to Verona and Qualwell. We have to make sure we keep expanding it here in West Orange. So, again, thank you to all who had participated, and still, if you have an idea and you'd like to send it to us, I know, Mrs. Morelli, you send me ideas all the time, and I really do appreciate them, and I do pass them along, and, you know, it's a work in progress, and we look forward to many great ideas and continuing to be able to give great programming for our residents because you all deserve it. Thank you, council president.
Excellent.
Can the tour lead ask a question?
Yes, sir. We're just gonna finish our.
Can the tour lead ask a question?
Yes.
What time is it? What about the time to send you the computers?
Okay, so there was a mailing. That's why I encourage you to call the Health Department.
Like I said, I should.
But you'll get on a mailing list. You'll get on a mailing list. So, let me, and granted, there are folks that aren't on the computer, and that is why we want the Health Department to have your address, because she just, I just said, all these flyers that I just mentioned were mailed out to all the individuals on that list. So, but you have to sign up to get on the list, 325-4150, and give them a call, and you will get a copy of everything. I'll give you a copy tonight of everything, sir. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, honey. And I was really pleased to see how everything on the website, westorange.org, has been moved up to highlight all the senior services. Really, Sherri has done a great job making it user-friendly. Councilman?
I'm just, I'm gonna defer to you on Earth Day.
Okay. Councilman?
Just a couple of things real quick. The Uniform Construction Code has been amended as of May 5th, I'm sorry, March 5th, so what would require a permit before may not now, so I encourage residents, homeowners, to check out our website where we list those changes. I'm gonna give you an example, you know, working on your porch, and I know in April around the corner, a lot of folks like to invest on their properties, so working on your porch, your flooring, your siding, the significant changes that you need to know about. Perhaps you're gonna need a permit, you may not have to spend a ton to come down to the township. Just take a look, if you take a look at the website, westorange.org, or you can call the department upstairs, 973-325-4112. That's the building department, that's the inspection department, and they can tell you whether or not you need a permit for a particular piece of work, plumbing, electrical. It's been liberalized in terms of the definition, so just check that out and become more informed about that if you're looking to make some repairs on your home. The other thing I want to talk about real quick, the branches, the township was picking up branches from curbs, and the last day was on Sunday. So, we're no longer picking up branches, so don't put the branches out there anymore. Going forward, they can go to the recycling center, bring them to the recycling center, or you can put them out on bulk day, but make sure that they're tied up with a string so they can be easily picked up by personnel. Other than that, council president, I don't have anything else to add here.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman? Yes?
I just wanted to follow up on what the councilwoman was saying about the change in permits, because we just renovated our bathroom, and we went in one week and we got it, we thought we had to get a couple of permits, and we had some questions over the weekend. We came back on Monday, and they said, oh, the law has changed, you don't have to get the permits. So, that was great for me, but I'm wondering if that's going to start impacting the revenue that we get from that department. It's a big revenue producer. Have you guys taken a look at what the potential impact might be?
We haven't done an actual analysis, but it is gonna have an effect. And that law was changed by the state, not by us. Bottom line is, we don't have any choice in matter.
You should put out a little tip jar for those people who no longer have to get the permits, but probably came with checks, and they could just drop them in there anyway.
That would work. That would work.
But yeah, and then on that note, if I may, council president, if a permit was pulled prior to the change, it has to be seen that it is completed under the former code. So, if it was pulled before that March 5th date, then you have to see that it gets closed properly. But in your case, it was done after the change. So, thank you.
May I ask, council president?
Of course.
Councilman, just wanted to know with the change, and I haven't had a chance, and thank you for bringing it up, are there any electrical changes or anything else, so the people don't need permits for any electrical work?
Yeah, that is listed, so it's a lengthy list.
I wouldn't go through the list.
No, 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 no. Not that I'm gonna go through the list, but I'm just saying, but doesn't that become a safety situation?
It's out of our control. The state is the one who governs these permits, and they changed the law.
There have always been electrical, all the items or categories, that homeowners have been allowed to do without permit. This just expands that. So, clearly, the state does not believe that this renders a safety issue. So, whatever, to the extent they are there, the state has made a determination, they believe that homeowners are capable of doing it. For instance, you've always been able to change a light switch.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking, Mr. Gross, thank you for your, I'm talking about just major things, because now, when somebody goes to buy a home, what is their guarantee that it's been up to whatever code it has to be? That's my concern.
It will be up to code by definition if everyone, you know, if it does not require a permit, then by definition, it's up to code. Now, whether it's done right or not, that's another issue entirely, and we all have had those issues if you have ever owned an old home. But the bottom line is, these changes, for the most part, I don't think are going to be causing any kind of safety issues.
Okay. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Gross and Mrs. Harris. Thank you, council president. Thank you, councilman.
Sure. Just to answer that question, the replacement of existing wiring with new wiring of the same capacity, providing that the wiring is of the same approved type of wiring by the local code. Also, they talk about outlets. If it's fewer than five outlets, you don't have to get a permit. The installation of dryers, the installation of any equipment indoors, so there are electrical items that are covered, so just look through this, or just call the office.
No, thank you.
Just call the office, 4112.
Okay. Thank you, councilman.
Really deferring.
Yes, there's no sense in both of us doing it.
I have a few announcements and a couple of invitations, and my colleague is deferring the Earth Day. Joe is the liaison, council liaison, to the Open Space Commission, but my husband happens to be the chair, so that's why he's deferring it to me. Last year, the Open Space Commission and the Environmental Commission planted 500 trees on property that the Open Space Commission acquired at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue, affectionately called The Rock, and they planted 500 trees, organizing over 100 volunteers. So, this year, with such a harsh winter, the 2018 Earth Day event on April 22nd, between 11:00 and 3:00, will be to take an inventory and maintenance of the trees that were planted. They look pretty good. They've been looked at over the course of the past couple of months, so you are invited to attend, help volunteer, maintain, count trees, take inventory. Parking is available at Liberty Middle School, and there will be a shuttle that will take you to the site. So, everyone is invited.
I'm also gonna defer my shovel to you, too.
Okay.
No, I'll be there.
Plenty. What else do we have? We have, there was a chamber meeting this morning. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce is working on the 20th Annual Community Awards Dinner, where the chamber recognizes police, the police nominates people to be recognized from the police department, fire department, education, educator of the year, and business of the year. That event will be at May 9th at the Wilshire Grand Hotel. Tickets are available at www.westorange, which is spelled out, westorangechamber.com. Lovely event. That's on May 9th. On May 10th, the day after, the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park are having their annual Glenmont Garage event. The funds raised for this project in Llewellyn Park at Edison's Glenmont Garage is to conserve the Edison's electric charging station. Those tickets are available at foedison.org. That is on May 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30. We have also, the West Orange Chamber has a Biz 2.0, where they have guest speakers. The next one is Monday, April 16th. This is a Lunch and Learn from noon to 1:30 at Luna Stage. The guest speaker is Mr. Abraham. Mr. Abraham is referred to as the LinkedIn Guy, and he specializes in helping small, midsize, and nonprofits utilize Lincoln to the best to promote their business and their social media network. Also, at Luna Stage, they are putting on the production of Man in Room 306. That starts on April 12th, will go through May 13th. This is to honor Martin Luther King Jr. and the 50th anniversary of his assassination. Victor mentioned before about the Highland Avenue Station, so I did submit a grant a few weeks ago in conjunction with the City of Orange. We have a letter from our mayor, a letter of support from our mayor, a letter of support from the mayor of Orange, Valley Arts Director. We also have, oh, Joe Albert, we just talked about redevelopment on Central Avenue. So, we have lots of support, and the idea is that there is so much community-driven economic development in an area that needs redevelopment in the midst of that Highland Avenue Station. So, the grant, it's a technical planning assistance grant, so we hope that we can have a comprehensive plan on what to present to New Jersey Transit. So, we'll wait to hear on the results of that. That's awarded to us. On behalf, I do have an announcement I'd like to make on behalf of our deputy mayor, Ralph Pansiello. The Veterans Access Seminar is coming up Wednesday, April 25th, from 10:00 to noon. This is at the Montclair Municipal Building, 215 Claremont Avenue in Montclair. This is Court Access and Legal Support Services for those who have served in the military. Topics include Veterans Court, legal wellness, surrogate court, child support, housing, driver's license restoration, New Jersey criminal justice reform, and mental health. And there are speakers sponsored by the Spirit Court of New Jersey. Telephone number is 973-776-9300, extension 53063. At our last meeting, the Human Relations Commission Chair, Tammy Williams, came inviting everyone to the community softball team, softball game. All are welcome to attend and play. Degnan Field on Sunday, April 29th at 1:00. Warm-up at 12:30. This is at Degnan Field, 650 Pleasant Valley Way.
Will we have a team?
For more information, you can email HRC@westorange.org. No comment.
No comment, okay. Five people can't field. Be surprised.
Maybe we need five people all in the outfield.
Okay.
Very good.
Madam clerk? Where does that leave us?
Okay. You want to go into the public meeting, right?
We're going to go into the public meeting. I know that we do have an ABC, brief ABC hearing, if we can do that first, I think.
Sure.
If that's okay, if we go a little out of order, just to.
Motion to go into an ABC hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If the motion is carried.
Taking care of business here, Senior Citizen Recreation Mailing List. So, if you'd like to put your name, your address, your phone number, and the email, I'll deliver this to Ms. De Nova for you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know we were a little delayed and went out of order with that, knowing that the gentleman had to leave. Yes, sir. Now's time for public comment. If anyone has a comment, please step up to the microphone.
Okay. Hi, my name is Frank Rosso. I'm a resident.
I'm a resident up at the Degnan House, 430 Main Street. I'm a disabled senior citizen in town. I've been here, I've been around town a long time, but West Orange permanently for about seven years now. Okay? And I'm here to talk about the senior survey. I got two hard copies here, and, I mean, it ended up being a lot of people were neither satisfied or dissatisfied. That doesn't help us. I put my name, my address, because I'm a disabled citizen in West Orange. Transportation is horrible for me. I stopped taking the bus because every time I called, they told me the lift is not working. I understand we got a new bus. I haven't called back because I'm still under the impression time is bad, pickup time is bad, drop-off time, and return time. Okay? That was my experience prior to 2018, '17, say. According to the survey, West Orange is not a senior-friendly town, with all the answers and people with the quotes. But my main thing is transportation, obviously. And also, I heard before you were talking about Bolt Garbage Day. If you ever go up on Harrison Avenue, I live up close to Harrison Avenue, they put things out two, three days before Bolt Garbage Day. Mattresses, whatever you throw out, I can't get by the sidewalk. I'm in a wheelchair. Okay? And you got to talk to the residents up there. But like I said, the lift was broken, transportation, 58% were neither satisfied or dissatisfied. Okay. That doesn't answer this questionnaire, I don't think was geared towards a disabled senior citizen or somebody over the age of 75 that don't drive no more, that don't have access to a computer. All right? If somebody didn't bring me the survey, I would have never known about it. The lady in the back, thank you, handed me the number to call to sign up for physical med, I never, nobody ever said that before. Okay? I've been here seven years. And a lot of recommendations you guys can't do within the time period. Fixed sidewalks. I don't know what's going on with the transportation because I haven't used it, but I don't want to use it. If it wasn't for outside sources, I'd never be able to make this meeting. Okay? I recommend maybe you have sessions for senior citizens during the day, between 1:00 and 3:00, when you guys have off or we can get enough, because a lot of us don't come out at night because we don't drive. You see a lot of people here? Seniors? No. A lot of them, they can't make the chamber meetings, and that was a big thing of mine. And what else do I have here? Community programs you talked about, I like the ideas, but there's nothing for the men. Bingo. I play bingo. I like bingo, so it doesn't bother me. I've been playing since I was a kid with my grandmother and my mother. Aerobics, zumba, that's geared towards like ladies, basically. I mean, some men participate, but they don't have like a poker club. I mean, there's no men's organization that I know of. Maybe there is. Okay? But not, then Councilman Michelle over here said 90% of us, yeah, but it was 55 and over. People 55 are on the computer. I'm 60 years old. I mean, I couldn't tell you what to do. And I should learn because I got to catch up, but, you know, and this, people make $110, $140,000. I'm on poverty. Mostly these people with the survey, since ARP declared a senior citizen is 55 now, the survey did not geared toward a senior that's disabled. I know you tried, it's a lot of work. I signed my name, my number, and I told, on the front page of the survey, and I said, give me a call because I'm a disabled senior citizen. I think you should talk to me in person. No response. It might have went through the process, they didn't see it. I have no problem with that. But I got two hard copies of the report. I don't know if any of you read it. Most of the comments are negative. And I love this town. I mean, it's a great town. I enjoy living here. I grew up in Orange. I hung out in West Orange, and I like it. But now that I'm a disabled senior citizen, it's a different story. All right? And like I said, if it wasn't for the lady in the back, she gave me a number to call. You said the number, but I just didn't have it in my head. There's no notice. Up at our building, they put things on the building board, on the billboard, but, you know, that's great, but sometimes we get them late, like the prom. I, you know, I don't know anything about, and I went to the prom last year. I don't know if you saw my picture in the Chronicle, I was dancing. I enjoy it. I have a broken leg and a broken hip now, I can't do that. But I never knew about it this year. There was no contact. By the computer, yeah. I would have went on the org or the patch. So that's my thing. I mean, you guys got to get together with this, like, I almost got hit two times coming on Lindsey Avenue here, trying to cross the street. Okay? I don't know if, I mean, that's, it happens all the time. You know, disabled, sidewalks are bad, that's the homeowner's problem. I mean, I'm starting to get emotional because I love the town, but a lot of things, for me as a disabled citizen, aren't happening. Okay? Or I don't know of, because I don't go on the computer. I don't go on the computer. I'm one of the 10%. Okay? And there might be, that survey might be wrong, there might be more than 10% that should go on the computer, because people 55 deal with computers at their jobs. All right? I'm on Social Security disability. I don't work no more. I don't have a computer. All right? I have a telephone, and I answer it. You know, like, if you call me, I answer. All right? So that's my thing. And the transportation, like I said, it might be better, but every time, I kid you not, nine out of, I won't say nine, I say, say five out of 10 times, I called for transportation, sorry, the lift is not working. Okay? Now, yesterday, I was up at the inventory care in Livingston. Okay? Our buses don't go no further than the edge of West Orange. I saw buses from Orange, Newark, and East Orange dropping people off at the inventory care. We're closer than those towns. And I don't know what time the transportation shuts down. But like I said, I wouldn't be able to make it to this meeting if I didn't have outside transportation. So I'm hoping maybe we can get a senior citizens council date, where people in town would come and find out what's going on, because a lot of this stuff is not affecting us because we don't own homes no more, we're in senior buildings. Because there's a lot of activities, if you didn't give me, I would never know.
Okay.
You know?
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me. I mean, like I said, I like the town, just hope we can do something. All right? All right. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't want to run you over. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, please. I have a little information you can pass around. It's from neighboring towns. Just different programs that they have.
Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry?
State your name and address, please.
My name is Patricia Segalas. I live at 430 Main Street at the Degnan House in West Orange.
Can you spell your last name?
Sure. S is in Sam, I, G is in George, A-L-A-S is in Sam.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my last name is spelled with a B, your name is G-R-O, S-S-O, G-R-A, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. By the people, for the people. Senior citizens are people, too, and we have needs. We have needs such as activities to keep us active both in body and mind. We could use activities which are nominal in cost, because despite the figures quoted in the survey, take it from me, the average income of a senior citizen in West Orange is nowhere near $100,000 to $150,000. It is possible this figure is based on the younger 55 to 65-year-olds who are still working. Most seniors over 66 years old pretty much fall between $9,000 to $20,000 annually. We need a senior citizen center centrally located so that a majority of our seniors can get there. There are many of us without cars, so we must use public transportation. As far as I know, the jitney will only take people to their medical appointments, Shop Right on Monday, Kmart every other Wednesday, and the Livingston Mall on Friday. As, let me see. Some of our neighboring communities go to the supermarkets at least twice a week, and that's to do different supermarkets as well, not to mention other malls, stores, such as Coles and Farmer's Market on 46. Other communities provide newsletters and monthly calendars. They also provide a multitude of services for their seniors as well. I tried very hard to get people to, in my building as well as at my church, to fill out the questionnaires and also to come here tonight. To both, I received responses such as, why bother? They won't listen. We've tried for so many years, and they aren't going to do anything. So this is a general attitude of our seniors, because they know. Also, many of us do not have computers. We're not computer literate. Some of us were going to the seniors with seniors up at the high school, and that was cut out for some reason. We don't know why, but it was. Many senior citizens feel like we are dust, and the council is a broom, that you keep sweeping us under the rug and hope that we will disappear. Remember, by the people, it was by the people you sit in the, it was by the people the reason why you sit in those seats. For the people, it should be for these people that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment. It's for... Got a lot of stuff here. I don't know if I'll make it. Excuse me, Rosary Morelli Ralphrode. I don't know if anybody announced that. That's going to be another big thing, that seniors probably can't go because of no transportation. It's another police effort.
Well, we could arrange for the presentation.
It's my opinion that although the senior survey had some design flaws, skewed findings, and underrepresentation from key subgroups, the key takeaway is that West Orange comes off as a township in need of better, more proactive management, run more like a business entity. Tonight, I'm going to talk about two critical issues. The serious lack of communication, and secondly, transportation, which hits at the heart of senior needs. You heard that here tonight. One positive and very important finding is that seniors feel safe in our township, which indicates the police department, and I've said this before, is doing a good job, which is very reassuring. The survey's key findings, that there is a lack of communication to the residents about West Orange programs and services, which is underscored by the following example. The senior survey results, and I spoke about it at the last meeting, were presented at the March 27th council meeting, but there was never communicated to the seniors. It only appeared on the meeting agenda, which seniors do not access because they generally don't attend the meetings. It would have been better if the people most affected, which are the seniors, by the survey, would be informed in ways that can be easily reached. The survey results showed that two-thirds of respondents rated promotion of events is either poor or very poor. The major takeaway there is that seniors are underserved, dust swept over the rug or whatever, by the township. Regarding transportation, the jitney service was the most commented service, and this is a direct quote from the survey. Respondents indicated high concern about current problems and future concerns as they grow older. There were some questions about access link and how it works. Respondents were confused about how the jitney works. They noted transportation to medical and health-related appointments was problematic for those who do not drive. One senior commented, quote, "A lot of doctors moved over," this sounds familiar, right? "to the medical complex on South Orange Avenue, including my primary doctor, and the senior bus will not take us there. That causes me not to see my doctor as often as I should, since I have to find another way to get there." Obviously, the lack of transportation options prevents some respondents from accessing healthcare facilities. Another quote from a respondent, quote, "Transportation to get to health services, especially in neighboring towns, is a problem." End quote. According to a well-regarded national study, and I quoted this before, inability for seniors and disabled people to get to doctors and medical facilities is causing an increase in the death rate. That's a horrific statistic. The response rate was 30%, oh, I missed a sentence. "Very confusing is the high response rate to the questions of how often seniors use certain available options." The response rate was 30%. Never heard of the Essex County Senior Transportation Service. This is your survey. I told you I did a random sample, found the same thing. So something's wrong there. That information has to be communicated proactively from the township health department. That's where it should reside. My understanding is, the county meetings, the health department goes there. We're not getting any information back. Something's wrong. Primary concern among respondents is a lack of transportation options for seniors around the town. Of course, they are most worried about when they're unable to drive themselves anymore, and they know they will have difficulty getting around town. I'm hoping your future planning and spending objectives take all these concerns seriously. Now, we're going to get to surveys. SOMA did a survey, and I attended two years ago. Their survey was done on three sheets of paper, and they did it with Survey Monkey. It was a successful survey. As a result of that survey, Pierce, if you're around, maybe...
Your time is up.
It's done?
Yes.
May I have a little more time just to go over this, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. As a result of that survey, the three pages, there was a focus group meeting held at the West, at the Maplewood Women's Club, the old building, and they best seniors in from all over the two towns. They had two rooms filled with tables of eight and 10 people. The two mayors, well, the mayor of Maplewood and the president of the, where the trustees were there, as well as the directors of the health departments of both towns, and the directors of recreation. The room was filled with people, had a lot of volunteers. That was free, the monkey, what is it, the monkey, Survey Monkey. This, after that survey, is a grant from the Grotto Fund for Senior Care. This is something that's manageable, easy to read, and senior citizens can, as opposed to, this is what we had to go through. I couldn't get my head around this. Okay? You want to guess that out? Karen can make copies. Again, these are what we had. At this focus group meeting, there were young adult volunteers, as well as, I said, the two mayors, the directors of the health departments, and the directors of recreation, as well as, again, volunteers. Table to table, getting more input from the people, the seniors. It was like deja vu all over again, an AT&amp;T conference. They had about seven or eight easels, and they went from table to table, taking those, and the seniors gave them more input. With that, at the end, they summarized, and they posted on all of these easels, all this information, took that back, and you've got that report. That's easy to read and did as much, if not more, than what we did. I would recommend very strongly that you reach out, network, do your research, go to all these different towns. I sent you the, I get tons of that every day. And you know what it does to me? Makes me angry, makes me sad, that we can't be there. It's going to be a lot of catching up. Just go through that survey. It's amazing. Montclair had a survey, they, all these towns had surveys. Montclair went through and did a transportation survey, and they know what their people want. Now, I know that Mr. Guarino was with the mayor of Maplewood. Did he talk about a survey?
I'm sorry?
You said you were going to speak to the mayor of Maplewood. Did you speak about the survey?
I haven't seen, when I see him at the next meeting, at the joint meeting, Rosary.
And as far as comments from the seniors in the community, you heard what the people said, but they told me it's a bunch of baloney. Nothing's going to be done. We're not going to see anything done in this town. They just ignore us. I hope that doesn't happen after all this. I personally gave out almost 300 surveys. I don't know how many came back, but I worked real hard to get that done, because I really care about our seniors. care about our seniors. The, "For more transportation, go-go grandparents," working really well. Everybody likes it. I gave out 1,700 cards. I just got another 500 and a note from the guy who started this for his grandmother. That's it?
Uh-uh.
Thank you for listening.
Susan.
She gave me hers today. I appreciate today.
Susan Luncheck, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. "I am also expressing some concern over the survey of older adults in West Orange. There was a response rate of 6 percent, which seems rather low to me. It may not be a problem if that 6 percent represents a cross-section of the population, but in this case, it is clear that it did not. The summary of the survey itself stated that large segments of the population, including African-Americans, Asians, Hispanics, and males, were underrepresented. Because the response rate was low and not representative of the diversity in the West Orange population, some of the data need to be viewed with some skepticism. For example, the data indicate that 90 percent of seniors have internet access. Like others here, I would also question that. Maybe 90 percent of the respondents do, but it is uncertain whether 90 percent of all West Orange seniors do. So it cannot be assumed that the best way to communicate with a broad audience of seniors is by the internet. And I know Councilwoman Castellini mentioned that that's being addressed, and we appreciate that. Also, I'm not sure that I would trust that the income level of respondents, 100,000 to 149,000 per year, is typical of the average West Orange senior. Without data from a broader cross-section of the community, that number cannot be considered to be accurate as an average. The survey was trying to capture data from anyone 55 and older. Let's say they represent a range of about 40 years. But just as there are vast differences between someone who is 10 and someone who is 50, a span of 40 years, there are also differences between those who are 55 and those who are 95. So there ought to be an attempt to examine the needs of smaller age ranges within that 40 or so years. Say 55, 65, who might still be working full-time, 65 to 75, and so on. And I hope that the town recognizes the need to address the differences in needs among the various age groups. Regarding the finding that 61 percent of the respondents do not think that West Orange is a good place to age and place, if that opinion was expressed by a group that is in an upper-income bracket, that currently is somewhat independent in that they can drive themselves, and that considers itself active, then I have to wonder what might be said by those who are less mobile, have lower incomes, and have some disabilities. If the survey respondents truly represented a cross-section of the community and captured the viewpoints of other groups, that 61 percent figure might be much higher, and that should be a source of great concern to the township. I would hope that any decisions made by the township to address the findings would take into account that at least some of the data do not represent all segments of the senior population. However, there was some very useful information in the survey results that needs to be acted upon, such as better and more diversified methods of communication from township to seniors regarding services that are available, and that includes transportation. Also, the township needs to look seriously and more closely at the reasons seniors do not find West Orange to be a good location to age and place. Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go.
Mary L. Clemmensen, Port Cherry Wood Circle. My comments tonight are firstly about the senior survey, and secondly about this year's budget request from the administration. About the senior survey, my first question to you is, what are you planning to do with the results, both right away, which we heard tonight, and I was delighted to hear the quick response, but also over time, over the next year or two? How do the results reflect, affect your planning and policymaking and grant requests this year and next year? And already, we heard about one immediate grant request. Here are some observations I'd like to share with you. Close to 30 percent of the population in West Orange is aged 55 or older. I was really surprised that it was that high. The next census is going to be 2020. The survey says it's going to be even higher by then, and then, and even higher as we go forward. 80 percent of the respondents were either happy or neutral about the overall level of community services and resources. So you may think everything is fine the way it is, but that would be really, really wrong. And a number of us here are hoping, you're not assuming that. Most importantly, I'm concerned that you may think that absolutely nothing needs to be done to change what West Orange could do to make itself more a livable, age-friendly community. To begin with, the survey makers themselves acknowledge that the survey respondents do not, in fact, represent the actual demographics in West Orange. In fact, the following groups were underrepresented, as Susan was pointing out. Males, blacks, Hispanics, people who don't drive, people who don't use computers, people who have health concerns, the disabled, those who live on less than 50,000 a year. That would be a majority of the population that you did not hear from in this survey. So to be clear, you're getting opinions in the survey from people who are white, female, drive themselves around, they're relatively healthy, and they're relatively well-off. These people don't particularly need services that the other group does. And if they're like me, they don't want to be called seniors. All right, let's take transportation, for example. This tends to be one of the largest issues of concern to seniors if you look at any other national or regional survey. But you may think everything is perfect the way it is in West Orange because 58 percent of the respondents thought that the transportation in West Orange is either good or excellent. As a few people have already pointed out, you know, if we just use our common sense, we realize that the people who most need the services were not represented in the survey. So hopefully, you're not going to think that the transportation, the way it is for seniors, is adequate, because it is not. And we heard very thoughtfully tonight why that's the case. Another concern is that aging and place initiatives are growing in many other towns. The survey recommends creating regular opportunities for residents to share their views. This is certainly a strong support point for creating a senior advisory board, which we've discussed before. There's a continuing list of needs that need to be addressed over the next bunch of years, and the health department would certainly benefit from a focused person or a group that can proactively, not reactively, liaise between seniors and township. So I took great heart in the fact that tonight you might be grant writing. I'm not sure I heard, I understood exactly what for, but if there's going to be a part-time coordinator, you said, and I'd like to know, well, for what specifically? Would it be for seniors specifically or some other sub-issue? Another issue is affordability. Taxes and housing are a very large concern. 90 percent of the survey respondents are concerned about taxes. That has really got to surprise you. 90 percent. I couldn't believe the number myself, and you know I hate higher taxes. 90 percent. These survey takers will be thrilled to hear that the township is proposing to raise the budget by 4 percent, taxes by 2 percent, and school taxes by 3 or 4 percent this year. I understand that it's difficult to bring expenses down, I really do. But there are 60 or 70 other towns in New Jersey that are not raising taxes this year, and I'd love to see West Orange be part of that. One of these days, towns are going to have to merge in order to cut out, you know, this huge layer of expense that exists. If we can't, if we can't budge on taxes, then something major is going to happen over time. Finally, livability. 61 percent thought West Orange was not a good place to grow older. This is disturbing from a planning and taxation standpoint. So how will the town be implementing these results in the master plan?
Your time is up.
Okay?
Finish it.
I only have one more sentence, as it turns out. I hope you will be designing for, not the group that took the survey, but for the actual demographic in West Orange, and I hope you will be stretching your focus and imagination to make West Orange a desirable place to grow older. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lisa.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Fahouei, F-A-H-O-U-E-Y. I know that's a tough one. 201 Gregory Avenue. I'm also the president of the library board for the West Orange Public Library, and because this happens to be National Library Week, I wanted to give you some quick details on some noteworthy programs that the library has coming up in April. This coming Monday, which is the 16th, Know Your Rights, an LGBT senior advocacy program. That's going to cover methods for combating discrimination among LGBT seniors in healthcare, housing, employment, and other areas. Thursday evening, April 19th, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., Talk Saves Lives Suicide Prevention. With the increasingly prevalent link between bullying and suicide among young students, this program is designed to offer a brief introduction to suicide prevention and hopefully start a dialogue between adults, educators, parents, children, about the risk of suicide and how to prevent it. And as a counterpoint to these very serious topics, we've got a musical program on Sunday, April 29th, Standards by Cole Porter, Irving Berlin, and the Grossman Brothers. There'd be a vocalist with a piano and bass accompaniment. I am, as the library board president, proud and continually astounded at the variety and quality of programming that the library director and staff is able to put together, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here to help spread the word. You can find complete details on the library calendar, which is WPL.org. There's also a print newsletter available for anyone who doesn't have access to the website. And finally, some exciting news. The library this year is celebrating its 70th birthday. We are celebrating from June 2018 to June 2019, because in the history of the library, there were a few years where various things were happening, and we chose the 2018 because 1948 can be considered the formal birth of the library. We're planning a variety of historical, celebratory, educational programming, and unveiling a campaign to hopefully fund some new cool technology initiatives at the library. More info on that is going to be coming shortly, and we look forward to everyone joining in the celebration of the 70th birthday of your library. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Meyer?
Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Mark Meyer with 19 Howell Drive. I'd just like to thank the men and women who plowed the snow this winter. They were, I think they did an incredible job, on my street, anyway. They were very dependable. They would come two or three times, often in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, and they did a great job. So if you see them, thank them for me, okay? Thank you.
Alan Grossman for North Cohen Place. Just two clarifications. You had mentioned before, Councilman Cirillo, that to pick up with the branches. I thought it was Monday, but everybody on my block put it out, I think, on Sunday, or Monday, they thought. Anyway, it's still sitting there. So if they haven't picked it up by now, we actually wanted to clarify that still going to do it, if it's been out there from the time that it was supposed to be out there. So if you could clarify.
I will check it out.
Right.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. The other thing that I just wanted to clarify, that came to light right before I came here, somebody sent a note to our editor about EMS donation to another town. This was again, DMS, of course, went out, you know, in 19, a few years ago. And I just wanted to clarify how their funds, I guess, they got donations, how that works, if the town has any input on where their funds that were left, that were donated, go, or they, it's strictly an entity unto themselves, they can decide where those monies go? If anybody could clarify, tell me who, maybe I could speak to, to clarify where those dollars are going or have gone. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Name an address, please.
Michaelina Formato, 10 Gaston Street, in the Rent-a-House. My question is addressed to Michelle. You mentioned senior building, having computers. Can you elaborate on that? Where, what we're going to do?
Okay, great.
Today?
Right now, as soon as we finish public comment, yes.
After public comment, the council will discuss everything.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Of course, this time of year is big cherry blossom time. It looks like this year the cherry blossoms will bloom this weekend. That would be our peak season, which fortuitously coincides with two major events, with Cherry Blossom Festival Saturday at 10:00 a.m. being a children's fun run followed by a family day that goes until 4:00. And then Sunday, from 11:00 till 5:00, is the Bloom Fest at the Cherry Blossom Welcome Center. So we do invite everyone to come out. The county Earth Day celebration is April 28th at the Environmental Center from 11:00 to 5:00. There'll be eco vendors, a lot of our partner organizations, such as the Beekeepers, Master Gardeners, and a whole lot of other organizations will be represented. Lot of activities for children and adults, so people of all ages can increase their awareness about how to be great stewards of the environment. And finally, May 5th is our Household Houses Waste Collection Day. It's the regular site in Cedar Grove, 125 Grove Avenue. That goes from 8:30 to 4:30. We encourage everyone, instead of just throwing stuff in the garbage, if you take a look at the list of items that are, that can be disposed of in environmentally friendly way, you can bring there. There's no cost to Essex County residents. And just as, two weeks after that, on May 19th, from 9:00 till 3:00 is our Computer and Electronic Recycling Day. Same location, 125 Grove Avenue in Cedar Grove. And again, instead of throwing computers and TVs into the garbage, you can bring them up to that site. Both events, we do have staff on hand. You just basically pull up, open your trunk, we'll take everything out. You don't have to get out of your car. It's a very smooth event, so we look forward to everyone participating there.
And you want to give us the location on your Earth Day event on the 28th?
Earth Day is at the Environmental Center, which is 621B Eagle Rock Avenue in Roseland.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing nowhere to close public comments and respond to a lot of the remarks that were made, mostly about senior survey. I do want to say that my takeaway was similar to a lot of comments that were made this evening. Yes, we did have 753 reports that came back, surveys that came back. It did not, was not a cross-reference, cross-representation of our municipality. I think, though, that what did come out of this is the jumping off point, that yes, we have so many services in place, people meet, better communication definitely was a component of this, and addressing the transportation issue. So no, we're not trying to sweep anyone under the rug. I think this has all been brought to light so that we can respond appropriately and specifically through the health department, that making the concerted effort, as we just mentioned during our own liaison announcement, that I met with the health department yesterday. I was in the mayor's office yesterday afternoon. I saw what Sherri's doing to the website already, though we're hearing that not everyone has access to that. With the health department, there will be a concerted effort to make sure that either the houses, the Degnan House or the Rent-a-House, they all have coordinators there, that they have access. So all of the things that you're saying may have been posted at the wrong time or not in a timely fashion. Those lines, there has to be a whole line of communication and format that everyone receives the information in a timely manner so that it can be posted. We can go back to that. The newsletter, I found a newsletter from 2009. My colleague has already spoken to the Rent-a-House about resurrecting My colleague has already spoken to the Rent-a-House about resurrecting that newsletter. Hopefully, that is, there was general information in there that can be shared with everyone, not necessarily online. It was similar to the old outlook that we had, and that had a lot of information in it, a calendar, and basically a newsletter. So I really believe that this is a jumping off point for the Health Department and the administration to continue to promote the services that they have and to get the word out to everyone. Mr. Grasso, interesting that I have started, years ago, started a knitting club at the Rent-a-House.
I've done that.
No, no, I'm just saying that these were programs that I started, knitting club, I was able to secure a yoga instructor, and now that you just mentioned about men activities, just an interesting comment and a whole different way to look at things. So, thank you, thank you really for your, for the suggestions that you made. Though you do post on the Valley site, because we're friends of Valley, so I do keep, I do see you on there.
For school, I would.
Yep, yep, thank you. That kind of summarized everything that we talked about. Michelle can go into more details, but I do believe that this was a jumping off point for us to tackle the issues that were raised. Speaking of seniors, though, I just have to take a second to wish Max Manchell, my friend and neighbor of 35, 36 years, my former Planning Board attorney and my Planning Board mentor, a happy 90th birthday today. So, just happy birthday to Max. Alan mentioned about the, Mr. Grossman mentioned about the pickup. My understanding of the message, the robo-call that the mayor left, was that everyone was to put the debris out on Sunday, April 8th, and now the township is picking it up. So, yes, in 12 square miles, there's still a lot of work to be done. So, it wasn't that it was, it's not done, it has to get done now, but that was the date to put things out. And John, I don't know if you have an answer on the EMS donation? I would imagine since the fire department took that operation over, it would go directly to the fire department.
No.
No?
All of their funds, they were private 501(c)(3). Their funds, whatever they had when they stopped operating, continue under their control, and whatever they do with them, it's up to them. They could donate that to other 501(c)(3)'s or other uses that they're allowed to do based on their corporate, as a corporate entity, but none of that came to the township.
Jacque, and I just also wanted to mention, though, that Mr. Grasso did bring up the topic about property maintenance and sidewalks and things on, he mentioned Harrison Avenue, but we've heard this before, I think that has to be addressed too, putting trash out before, that's a property maintenance issue that should be addressed.
Sure. Communication and promotion seems to be the topic of tonight. We do, and based on what I heard, or the announcements that were made, we have, we may not have like the best of programming, but we do have some really solid programs. Perhaps, you know, there are some areas that are being, are underrepresented, but we have to start with communication and marketing. What I will do is, I will take it upon myself, I want to work with Debbie Salinari and the folks at the Degnan House and at the Rent-a-House, the Marzulli Group, to see what kind of resident services financing can be found to try to improve on the communication and then build a bridge between the township and the office. There are, there is a separate pot of resident services money that can be used for marketing, perhaps find some, and I don't know if, I know what Degnan House has, I don't know what Rent-a-House has or the other homes, with respect to bulletin space, bulletin board.
Everything's posted.
Everything's posted, it's just the information's not up there. I mean, but.
Okay, Mr. Grasso, we're just going to respond to, thank you, thank you. That's okay.
And as Councilwoman Castellino has mentioned, the plan of action, or the community action plan, as a result of the survey, will lead us to some sort of consolidation of information.
Yeah, yeah, I'll speak to it, why not?
We're going to improve the public relations by consolidating everything. But that is my commitment, Council President. I will report back at the next council meeting, I will talk to the both homes and any other, any of the other sites, and see what we can do via their budgets, so that they can be a little bit more proactive and help us out as well with the communication to our population, our senior population in the buildings. But I do want to say, I just want to thank everyone for the very, very thoughtful insight on the survey. You looked at some survey techniques that were utilized, that were picked up, and yes, there are some flaws that need to be taken into consideration. Actually, they were listed as being weaknesses in the survey process. There are some flaws, but yes, we can't take that as 100% accurate. We have to keep in mind that there are flaws, it's a small segment of the population. Marielle made an excellent, and Susan made an excellent point of pointing out, you know, some of the percentages and how they're not representative. One of the numbers that sticks out is 33% of the folks that responded didn't want to list their income. So that's why, you know, there's an issue with the survey showing us that perhaps there's a higher income population over 55%, over 55 years and older in the township. So, again, thank you for assisting us as we move forward, and hopefully this can lead to some plan, some sort of community action plan. I looked at, this morning I was reading about DotMatics printers, DotMatics printers, you guys remember those? They were very efficient, you know, they weren't the best quality, but they really printed out, they used to crank out checks, John, you remember? Lengthened reports, and at a fraction of the cost of today's technology. While today's technology gets this information right away, it becomes a little more expensive. So, I was actually, on that Maplewood survey, I was very impressed. It's very simple, it's to the point, and perhaps, you know, sometimes we need to take a step back and not think that, you know, our seniors are on Facebook all the time, on social media. Perhaps we can talk to the houses about setting up a computer station on the side, just to bring folks up to date. And while, but before we do that, you know, take into consideration that sometimes simple is better, but you do have to commend this, and especially Councilwoman Castellino, Council President, for the hard work that we're putting in and we're being proactive and we're addressing the concerns. We're not 100% there, but, you know, you are being listened to. We do care up here. I, what we have to do is we have to transport ourselves in some ways, think about what it means to live at the Rent-a-House, right? What it means to live at the Degnan House at the age of 55 or 60 years plus, and how we can connect the services to ourselves if we were living there, if we were of, you know, we had physical limitations or health concerns, et cetera. But, yeah, I have confidence that as a council, we're listening and we're going to do the best that we can, but I'll talk to some of the houses, that's my commitment today. My second topic was National Library Week. Thank you, Lisa, for bringing it to our attention, and I was on the Library Board for like 10 years, and it still seizes to amaze me, the volume and the activity that goes on, and you hit the nail right in the head, it's an impressive service that we have in the community, and we have to let the public know to come out and look at the programming. It's been top-notch since, as far as I can think of. So, thank you for your service on the board, and for what you do to make sure that Dave continues the progress. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to say really thank you, because that's, what I was saying was I wanted to say thank you for taking this take-action approach, because what I was saying about the newsletter and at the different houses, it was exactly that, that either you or Councilman Corino, being at the Rent-a-House, could go to the website, print out the calendars, print out the information that's being posted now, and get it to the representatives there. So, or let them know to do that and post that. I think, like, you know, simple, take-action steps. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money to implement these ideas. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Cirillo, too. It's a good idea, because at last night's Rent-a-House meeting, we spoke about reactivating the newsletter. Marzulli has no problem in moving it forward. The one thing is, we need to get the senior board members and the resident board back together, which they're in process of. It's being difficult, but once we get that back in progress, we can put together people to put together the newsletter, which is a good idea, and working with Degnan House is great. On another note, though, it's like what everybody has said tonight, is that it's communication. And I think the key thing is, and this may sound crazy, but, you know, yes, everybody doesn't have access to a computer, particularly senior citizens or people who can't access a computer. But here's the thing, we have a major television studio at the high school. I can't see why not, we could all work together at this with the Board of Education and do a, you know, weekly senior program. I see programs on Channel 3645 from our high school and from our system, and I don't see a senior citizens program. And I can't see why not that we could work with the Board of Ed and its students and, you know, and put together a seniors' weekly newscast or an update. So, I know seniors have televisions, at least, you know, most do, so they can get right from their TVs information on what's going on. It's not perfect, but it's in addition in communication. This way, the information gets out there and it's no guessing, it's no, well, what if and everything else. So I think that's something we can look into and work with the Board of Education to get that out there, and I think there'd be a lot of people willing to work on this. So I think that's the major issue. We're not, speaking for my colleagues, we're not kicking seniors under. We're going to be there someday. I mean, some of us are closer than others, but we consider, you know, we live here and we want to stay living here, but not all seniors live at Degnan House, not all seniors live at Rent-a-House. You know, some still live in their own homes or regular apartments. So we need to reach out and make sure the communication is there. The survey was a great starting point, it's a great kickoff point, you know, is it the end? No, there's more to be done, but it's more information we need to see. And also talking, we need to, you know, talk to our resident, you know, neighboring communities and see exactly what they think. For what Rosary said is like, you know, I run into Mayor DeLuca of Maplewood at our monthly joint meeting, meetings, and he asked me, and, you know, so he asked me, the last time I saw him, how our survey went, and I said, "Well, hasn't been published yet, but when it is, we can talk about it." And I know the mayor is watching the show when it is published, so he'll have his answer. But I think it's critical that residents knows that we're not forgetting about the seniors, and that this is a great starting point. My compliments to everyone that worked on it. It's something that needed to be done, and it was done, and we just need to take it and move forward. And that's what I have to say. And happy birthday to the library, you know, it's another 70 years, and it's a great thing and the things the library does. And I noticed in some of the packages here, it mentions what goes on, but our library does offer these programs to seniors, but the sad thing is, you know, a lot of seniors don't go to them. And that's the sad part about it, is that the programs are there, and Rent-a-House is right across the walkway from the library, so, you know, our residents need to make, or at least be notified, that the services are out there. So, let's just keep up the communications, and I like to look into with the Board of Education and, you know, find out what we could do for, you know, a television, whether once a week or twice a month, you know, something like that. I think it'd be something they'd be interested in seeing, and the students would be interested in doing. So, thank you, Council President.
Sure. Thank you. I know there's space available, because we have the Aging Insights videos being produced there now, too. Councilman, comment?
Sure. First, I want to say thank you to everybody. There are some really great comments that were made tonight about the survey, and very effectively pointing out areas where the survey might not have hit the bull's eye, and also providing personal experience where the town could do a better job serving our seniors. The, a couple of things that have jumped out at me, Councilman Cirillo pointed out that a third of the people didn't provide income data, and so we have no idea what a third of the members of this, respondents in this survey had as income. So focusing on that portion of the demographic, I don't think is going to be very useful to us. We had 28% of the people of the respondents saying that they reported annual incomes of, annual household incomes of $100,000 or more. You had almost 35%, more than a third of the respondents who said that they don't take part in any public benefit, and this could be Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, all kinds of other programs, which strongly suggests that they're not in the demographic that we would necessarily want to focus our primary attention on. But it brings up the issue of looking deeper into the data. If you want to take out these people who make all of this money, who don't have the benefits, who don't appear to be of the primary focus, what you do is you then dig down into the data in what's known as cross tabs, and you look at specific answers by specific demographics. So you can knock out the high-income, the non-public benefit answers, and get the data that specifically identifies the concerns of the respondents in the demographics that you want. I asked for that data at the March 27th meeting, I still don't have it. I've had to file an Open Public Records Act request, but I still don't have it. And that's what we, as a council, really need if we're going to be looking at specific ways to respond to the data. I also want to thank the people who mentioned the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. I think, based upon what we've seen from the survey, the comments last week, I mean, last council meeting, the comments this meeting, I hope it will cause my colleagues to reconsider their opposition to creating a senior service, Senior Citizens Advisory Board, so that we have that central point of focus on the needs of this demographic. At the last meeting, we heard from Health Director De Nova, and we frequently hear from Councilwoman Castellino. And with all due respect to Councilwoman Castellino's substantial and continuing efforts in this area, she is not a member of the administration. And it's the administration which is responsible for providing the delivery of services efficiently to our citizens and for operating the township. And I would like to, and I hope the rest of the council, would like to hear from the administration on a regular basis as to what their take is on these results, and what are the action items, and what are the areas of focus going forward on a regular basis, similar to what we do with downtown Edison redevelopment. So I hope, you know, I would think it would be Mr. Sayers, but maybe it's Ms. De Nova, but I think we need to hear from the administration itself, because they're the ones who are primarily, they are responsible for delivering the services in town. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman? Sure. Please wrap up.
Okay, I will wrap up. Being that we have a short agenda, I just have a few minutes, because I think it's important that we take time. Folks came down last week and this week, a lot of concerns, you know, you look at the data. So I guess I'm going to start off with explaining the process of how we got to where we got and how we have this document. So, this time last year, Health Department applied for a grant for Partners with Health. We received a grant for $10,000 investigating what other towns were doing, and thank you, Ms. Morelli, you had brought plenty of information last year that we looked at. One of the towns that you mentioned was Montclair, Montclair State University, which facilitated our survey, also facilitated Montclair State's as well. They offered two surveys, the long version, which we decided to go with, and a very short version. Ms. De Nova, the Health Director, sat down with all her directors, getting input from them. We looked at ARP survey, I was on the committee with Mrs. Duffy, who also wears many hats, one being our social worker, Ms. Susan Iovino, who is our head nursing, the nursing department, and myself, and we. department, and myself, and we went to work to see what questions we should have. Um, so, we developed a survey. We invited members of, of the public in. Uh, we had, uh, ten members of our senior community, um, well, not only just the senior community, I shouldn't say that, um, invited in. Mrs. Morelli, you were one of those volunteers, and I thank you again. And so, was Ms. Clemmison. Ms. Clemmison, and I thank both of you for your time. Um, and they spent two hours, uh, with Montclair State. The Health Department, nor myself, or anyone on the committee, was present when the survey was given to them by Montclair State. They got to take the survey, they got to review the survey, and they came back with very thoughtful questions. A concern at that time, and Mrs. Morelli, I'm shocked that you came here with ten questions when you even asked for some more questions last year. Um, but we were sho, I, I'm, I'm just shocked, I have to say, and, and a little disappointed and blindsided by you this evening. Um, because we tried very hard to make this a transparent process, to get positive and negative feedback, any feedback we were welcoming. And, um, and it was a great two-hour meeting, I thought, that you had with them. And that's from, I called all the people in the committee, make sure they got to say what they felt they wanted to say to the Montclair State, and I thought all was great there, and we had a, a document, and we knew. We knew at the time, you folks took the survey, and I think it took, you know, about forty-five minutes to an hour. There was concerns that the survey was so long and tedious. Uh, things were tweaked, you gave great information to, to revise some of the questions, which Montclair State accommodated. And, you know, we knew we had a challenging document, but we also knew we had a document that had input from, uh, great stakeholders. And that was important to the administration, uh, and, and to myself spearheading this project. So, we get our survey, we get it out over last summer. Um, it was at the town pool. It went out in the mail. Uh, if you're a homeowner, it was, there was a letter in your tax bill last July, um, for the third quarter taxes. Um, so hopefully, most folks saw it. We did have a tremendous response from homeowners because of that letter, so that's probably why you see the income bracket the way you do. Um, we had, um, last, the end of last August in the summer, we had students from the high school come in to volunteer their time to get trained on how to give the survey to the residents. We also had many members of the community, some who are in this room this evening, volunteer to give the ser, how to give the survey and to pass it out. Um, Montclair State was wonderful, they facilitated this meeting. We had the high school was in, held in a library media center. We had computers, we walked through it. Um, again, we talked about in great detail on how we could get it out to folks who aren't on the computer. And mainly, most people opted to take it on the PDF version, um, a hard copy, not on the computer, because it was annoying on the computer, even though you could click quick. Um, but we also offered in September and October, um, two sessions where residents, uh, and we provided transportation to come up to West Orange High School during the daytime hours to take the survey with the assistance of the students, and the kids were wonderful. And we offered cheer yoga afterwards, and it, they were great sessions. Um, so, one session was better, um, better, um, attended than the other. Uh, I know myself, I went to Primetime Players, a few other senior meetings that were happening, um, the town pool. It was also in the Township Library. Thank you, seventy years of, uh, service, but we really utilized the library, because most folks who go to the library don't have computers. Um, we had PDF versions, and they were being taken on hotcakes. As we know with the feedback, oh, we went to the Hispanic Foundation. Councilwoman was so kind to translate for me. Um, we, we, and we handed it to the priests, we went to church groups, um, and we went, most importantly also, when I, um, the directors of all the senior housing, they were at the, um, at the, uh, training session, so we trained all our directors in all our senior housing. So, an all-out effort was made. They had the senior, uh, the PDF versions in all the senior houses. Um, I know, uh, Ms. Iovino was hustling, trying to get folks to sign up, um, and many volunteers in the community, again, thank you, thank you. So, Montclair State was impressed with our results, um, as far as how many taken. We were all surprised by the demographic, because we made this tremendous effort. But at the end of the day, we are not disregarding any data that, um, that doesn't show in the higher percentage range. All data is being considered, tabs, no tabs. What is posted online is what we have seen from Montclair State. And that's the data that they had given to us, and I'll get a statement from Montclair State to see what, what else they, they could provide us, but we're not hiding anything, we're very transparent, we're, um, and another point, Mrs. Duffy, who's also our social worker, who also works with the Mayor Sunshine Program, which, and, and works with many folks who are in need in the community, she's also very well aware of folks who aren't financially sound and who need assistance. So, I think we have a very good handle on, on the needs, especially comments that were made with the survey. We know communicate, we, I, communication is gonna come back as a weakness. Um, you had here in the township a few years back, Emily Rafferty, a full-time senior citizen coordinator, wonderful woman, proud to say she's my neighbor. She, she really, really, you know, was very involved, but it was a full-time position for her. She retired, and as budgets go, as the way they do, the position was not replaced, it was, it was dispersed through stipends. Mrs. Duffy, who is a, who is a, our full-time social worker and wears many other hats, had, has, um, is, is our, uh, program coordinator, uh, part-time, she does that, as long, and with, uh, um, Ms. Bianchi. And, um, we had the Outlook a few years ago, which the school board had really footed most of the bill for that, and that would go out on a quarterly basis. So, we, we know the communication was gonna come back, and we knew we have to do a better job at it. And, you know, tonight's a start. I'm glad Mr. Grosso came down. I'm glad he, uh, gave us some feedback about, about the men participation, um, because that is important. You know, I, I know, uh, Mr. Keough has golf tournaments that probably, if you see it on the TV, and we also utilize that too, channel, uh, TV thirty-six and forty-five. Uh, as far as getting the, uh, the high schoolers, they're on, um, they're on a program schedule, and that would be a stipend and funding we would need. So, we wouldn't just be able, it's a great idea, and I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Moore about it, um, but as far as like a weekly or a, maybe it could be monthly or quarterly. Um, but again, it's all, it all goes to funding. And that was the primary reason we needed this document. Partners in Health, um, they offer this other grant that we're going to, and we're taking the information comments, and we are looking to, we know we need another coordinator, and it will be, and if we get it through the grant, it will be dedicated just to, um, the senior programming. Okay? So, that, that's, you know, I had a meeting last week, it was the first of many meetings. Um, when the grant will be written, we'll be able to talk in detail. Right now, it's just, it's brainstorming, trying to get the information from this document, and trying to get what our needs are, you know, trying to take, take away the needs from all our residents, not just a part. So, don't feel like you're being swept under the rug, and shame on anyone who is making people feel that way. If people feel that way, because they haven't gotten a response from us, then shame on us. But if you're hearing it from, uh, uh, another resident, give us a call and let us know what your needs are, because this is a work and effort my colleagues have been working so hard on this. And, and the administration, and you're right, Councilman, uh, a lot of times, you know, it's not on us, it's, it's on the administration. They don't always work, um, as fast as, as I would love, as in the private sector, but again, you know, it's budget time. And, um, you know, they, well, you don't want to hear it, but you know, when, when positions are taken away and we start piecemealing, this is what you get. You get, you get piecemeal. So, um, in this budget, we have a part-time driver, because we are addressing those transportation needs. So, um, this budget supports a part-time driver dedicated to senior programming. Um, we also, and Ms. Clemmison made a lot of great points about the budget. First of all, it's not a four-point-four percent increase. Our spending has increased, but because of the great efforts in revenue and getting this grant writer and some other revenue we brought in, it's a two percent increase. So, you know, again, that number game gets a little, um, gets a little creative for some folks, um, but it's a two percent increase. Again, it's, it is an increase, and we're mindful of that, but we have mandated costs. And I asked Mr. Gross, uh, when it comes time to vote and have a budget presentation to highlight those, well, I want to call them highlights, because, you know, but to bring out, and let's, let's talk to the public, so you can understand the mandated constraints that we have here in the township. And, you know, it's pensions and contractual increases. Um, the library, you know, valuation went up, which is a great thing, but mandated, we increased the library's budget by seventy thousand dollars, which is a great thing for the library, but it's money that this, this body, uh, had, has to come up with. Um, the sewer commission, um, that was a two-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar increase. Um, health insurance costs went up, uh, drastically, and Mr. Gross, again, I can't stress enough that, you know, I like to see that, that mandate sheet and what we are getting for this budget. We are focused with this budget on creating an official IT department that we haven't had here in this township, and so, um, and reorganizing, and Mr. Gross had put a lot of, uh, IT initiatives into place the past year or so, um, which, you know, will cost this year, cost last year, but down the road, it will streamline processes. And as you could see from the survey, communication, getting things on IT. Ms. Quirk, uh, sat down last week, it took multiple hours working her and with Ms. De Nova. Um, you know, they got a little, you know, they had other things to do. The Health Department also takes care of the, uh, the sanitation contracts, and we just partnered, um, or we're just bidding out with the Board of Education to hopefully win an award, uh, to save on costs there. So, um, a lot of effort's been made, and a lot of, uh, attention has been made, and I know my colleagues, Councilman Cirillo and Councilman Guarino, um, I, I know they're gonna be busy bees in, uh, in the senior buildings that they're liaison to. Uh, I'll keep working with the school board on my end, uh, to see how we could continue to partner with them. And, um, again, we, we are encouraging folks to call us, what your needs are. Mr. Pagliosi, you're there with the county transportation. A lot of the transportation that was mentioned tonight, um, especially out of town, is provided by the county. And again, when we hear East Orange, Orange, the big cities, they get more funding than we do. And again, so we have challenges, because we're a township, we don't get some of the funding opportunities from the state, um, but we need to, um, you know, it's an all-out effort. So, tonight's not the end of it, nothing's getting swept under the carpet. Uh, we kept the, um, process open, and, um, again, I look forward to working on this with the administration. And I think maybe, you know, Mr. Sayers, maybe you could either, you know, make a statement tonight, or I may, maybe I'll ask the mayor to see if he'll come visit us one night, one evening, to give him thoughts on this subject. I'm sure he won't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I just, Mrs. Formato, one of our last comments was about the computers, right? So, I know that you had mentioned it before, but a couple of things just came up in this discussion, too. When Anthony mentioned about the Essex County having the, um, recycling of computers, the township has had mandatory e-recycling for a number of years now. So, even as the township upgrades some of their computers, or residents upgrade some of their computers, that they could be donated to some of the houses or making them available? Making them available for seniors? And I know that you were talking about, um, a grant, and that would be part of the grant. So, I know Mrs. Formato's still here, so.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. And my apologies, Mrs. Formato. Um, I have a lot of notes written down, there's a lot that we covered this evening. But yes, that was something that came out of our meeting last week, of something we would like to, um, write the grant for. And as Council President stated, I, I mean, there, I have a conversation, uh, to be had, uh, with the school district, my contacts there, to see if they have any computers as well that, um, that could be refurbished and used in the senior building. So, um, again, there's so many ideas coming up, that is a goal that we like to reach. Um, again, when we go for these grants, we hope we obtain them. They have to be obtainable goals, um, so you get awarded the grants. Uh, you can't just go for any grant that's out there. And again, that was the most important thing. If you walk away from anything else we talked about with this document, it is a tool that will assist us in getting so much-needed funding to hopefully implement so many ideas. And, um, and, and I think the administration, and I know from working with the Health Department, you know, they, they know, they, they know exactly what needs to be done, and, um, they're gonna continue to, to work on that. So, thank you again, Council President.
Absolutely. Jack, any comments?
Um, yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
From the administration, yes?
First of all, I would like to personally thank all the people who participated in doing this survey. Um, this survey was brought to our attention, uh, by our grant writers, and, uh, some people had discussed with the administration about doing a survey, so we decided to do it. We applied for the grant to make sure that we had someone independent who was doing the survey, not the people from the township, because I can tell you that I can sit here and I was gonna anticipate what was gonna happen. And if the township did it, it would have even been in a worse position. The township did not conduct this survey, okay? Montclair State conducted the survey. We helped them conduct the survey. Number one. Number two, if you read page three in the document, in the summary document, it'll tell you everyone we tried to target to do this survey. We cannot beat people over the head to participate in this survey. And if you look on page three and see what, how, the things that we did and what we did to get this survey out to senior citizens, not only, not only on computers, but in other places, and handing out applications, and, and handing out surveys, as Michelle said, even had, uh, uh, high school kids trying to help seniors to fill out the surveys. My personal opinion from reading the survey, the biggest problem with the survey was it was too long. No senior citizen's gonna sit down and fill out forty-seven pages in a survey. They're not gonna do that, okay? And that's why you got the group that you got to fill this survey out. I, that's just my personal opinion. I don't know that for a fact, but that's my personal opinion. So, if I had to, if I had to say, "This is the beginning," is the best thing I can say. This is the beginning of what we're gonna do to try and make things better. Can we make things better? Absolutely. Do we do things a hundred percent better than anybody else? Absolutely not. But I don't think we do things badly in this town. And, and to your, to go to your question, Councilman, this administration works very hard on a daily basis to provide services to this community, every day, every day, and during the night when we're off, as a matter of fact. Number one. Number two, I listen to people talk about lowering taxes, but I want more services. That doesn't work, okay? Tax dollars go to pay services in all communities. That's what they go for. So, if you want more services, I'm not saying the taxes are gonna increase, but it costs more money. The more services you want, the more money you have to pay for those services. So, we, as an administration, try to balance that out and make it work, not only for senior citizens, but for all the other people who live in this town. This is a very diverse town, not just culturally, but also economically. You have low-income people, middle-income people, and high-income people. When you run a budget with those three, it's very simple if you're in Short Hills, when you have everybody who's at the same level. That's not the way it is in West Orange. So, we have to basically work every day on making sure we deliver services to everyone in this community, not just to a certain group of people. And that's what we do. And in closing, like I said, if you read through this, it'll show you all the, all the outlets that we tried to get information to. And then if you go to page four and page five, you can read the strengths and the limitations. And when you read the limitations, you'll see, this, they're not, this, Montclair State didn't say, "Hey, these are the right answers." They're telling you why you, you got some good answers and why you got bad answers. That's what the serv, that's what the survey's about. There's, this is the beginning, and there's other ways that we have to do things in order to get done, the things that we need to get done, whether it's for the senior citizen community or for anybody else in this community. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, March 27, 2018.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
No. Comments? Any questions, comments? No?
I, I don't want to pull anything this evening, but I just had a couple of questions on Agenda Item D, Resolution 101-18. It's a resolution awarding a contract for the 2017 road improvements, Phase Two, various streets. The contract was awarded, construction contract, in the amount of $955,000. I just wanted to try to be clear, I asked Mr. Gross, the Chief Financial Officer, how much we had set aside in the 2017 capital budget for this. He said, three, basically $380,000 less than what, what the contract is, and I'm just wondering where that money's coming from?
CDBG grant.
Okay.
Community Development Plan.
And then Resolution 98-18 is a resolution to introduce the 2018 municipal budget, and schedule the public hearing on the budget for the May 8 council meeting. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, so if you wanted to comment on the budget. And, Mr. Gross, is the budget up on the line, on the township website?
It will be after you introduce it.
Right, but, for example, if people wanted to know what was in the budget, so they could come and give comments, is, is the, is the mayor's budget and the, the budget that
Yes, it will, once you introduce it, we'll, tomorrow, we'll be putting everything up on the line.
Okay. Great. That's all I had, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you.
So no resolutions being pulled?
No resolutions, no.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. We have one ordinance on first reading this evening, 2540-18, calendar year 2017, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. I'm going to ask John Gross to give us an explanation. I know you do this for us every year, and you say that this is basically housekeeping.
Yes, this is, it is a form of housekeeping. This is an ordinance that allows the township to create a cap bank that it can utilize, should it not need it, in, in this year, and it allows it to then carry forward over the next two years. So it's, we are using some of it this year, but there will be some left over, which will then move forward to future years, if we need it.
And just to follow up on that, we have limitations on how much we can increase spending. And this is to basically set up a bank, so that if we don't increase spending in a certain year, we could actually have that available in the future. I don't know whether it's two or three years, is that essentially
Yes, it's initial, two years.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the first.
Okay. And next item is pending matters, new matters in council discussion.
Any comments there? I think we had a pretty hearty discussion so far.
Yep.
This evening, is there anything that you want to raise to be discussed? Not at the moment, no.
Just, just going back to the budget presentation, if we could just, you know, have a, like a presentation.
Yes. That's a request. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you again for all the comments that were made. Good night.